I hereby call this meeting to order. For purpose of a special meeting to discuss Highland High School future planning, I turn the time over to Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. This is working today. So, we have been busy preparing for you. A little bit of an information sheet and a little bit ends up to be a lot of it because you can see the font gets just a little bit smaller, but we were able to squeeze a lot of information into these couple pages. So, today, Mr. Balls, Mrs. Fisher, and Mrs. Pettit will take you through these various scenarios and the information that's pertinent to this discussion regarding Highland High School, as well as a couple other items that we have gleaned through our previous three discussions with you. And so, of course, this information is a draft copy, and so, we need your input refining it today, and then, we will hopefully make it public very soon. Certainly, it's in our board documents today. However, we want to finalize it again with your direction, and then, getting something out to our public, and then, have that ready for our public forum that we will have next week. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Balls to start, and then, we'll see where it goes from there. And feel free to ask questions as we go along in this review, and again, your contributions are very important to us.
Okay. Okay, thank you for your time this evening. I also want to acknowledge our team here to my left, or your right, again, from Bateman Hall and Design West. So, they're here to help answer questions, give you any of the information that you might need. Again, wanted to say thanks to Ms. Fisher, kind of, for this format, putting it all together. It was a team effort to come up with the data and the information, but it was kind of her brainchild, if I can say that. So, again, kind of at the top, again, some guiding principles, you know, that we feel in decision-making. You can read through those. If there's anything that's missing or different, you can add to that. You know, again, what we know, we're still on track to be in that building. You will, on the fifteenth, finalize the lease agreements to put some of the displaced activity classes and extracurricular programs. And then, Ms. Pettit did secure through the county some temporary parking options, at least, there are some options there, even though with a little bit of walk away. And then, I'm sure you've seen and heard that, again, we received EPA emergency authorization to start demolition early, and so, that started and made some great progress over the weekend. It will slow down as we get closer to the remaining existing schools. You just, that just needs a little bit more delicate touch, if you will. They'll be shoring it up, because now that is exterior walls, and so, but, again, they will still on track to get there. One of my biggest, probably most important things as we look through these numbers, that, again, they're estimates. They are definitely fluid. Again, these potential projects, I, it, all the, please note that all financial figures and estimations are based on current available information, but subject to change, and that is a huge best, even on the economy, as we've seen the roller coasters in the economy, interest rates are county's taxable property market value, of course, our bond levy equalization, as we've talked about that before, what that comes in at, and then, of course, the insurance settlement that will be final. So, as we review some of these numbers, their ranges, their, you know, their ballparks for you. Once you narrow into one or a combination of different scenarios, then, we will go and find two, fine tune this, and look at scopes of what you want these spaces to look like, and then, of course, do that very quickly to be able to come into a number that we can present to the public. But for now, this will be a good document. Of course, you can add and delete if there's scenarios that we need to just take off the table and so forth, but we'll kind of go through, go through those and jump in. I'll share the mic readily.
Okay.
Okay. So, again, we did take off the scenario that we would build as-is. We felt that was kind of the default. If the bond were to fail and never get passed well, then, we're going to build back what we had. And so, that's a scenario that we just kind of took off that, but that's still, still there if any of these scenarios do not come to fruition, so.
And you anticipate that that would just be fully covered by insurance? There'd no need for a bond at all?
That is correct.
Or we'd use whatever funds?
Yep, that is correct. Yep. And we would try to do, you know, the best we can with the money that we had. So, again, scenario one, basically, rebuild Highland High School with the existing enhancements. The capacity, again, as we can maybe talk about the, you know, the growth and the projections, but we felt that was a good number in consideration of the other high schools that are in town as well, but it also enhanced that, the current capacity of Highland there.
So, this was a question I had.
Please.
When you say with enhancements, is that what this second block is?
Yes.
Enhancements, or are these in addition to whatever enhancements you were thinking of?
No, these.
These would be the enhancements.
These would be the enhancements. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. Of course, it'd be an improved, larger gym, activity spaces, additional eight to ten new classrooms, and then, a renovation of the auditorium.
So, you're talking renovation of the auditorium that's there, not building a new one?
Correct. That was kind of, yeah, expand on the, be able to expand on the site that was there.
Oh, that's interesting. I was thinking, I liked Jim's idea of, you know, the, what was that?
Let me just ask real quick, Mike and Shay, was that, that was a renovation in your visions and your numbers that you shared? The auditorium wasn't brand-new, but it was using some of the structure that was there?
Yeah, just using that and adding on to it. I think we added, I mean, ten thousand feet to it for the auditorium. Auditorium expansion, ten thousand feet, and then, we figured about ten thousand feet of the existing face, the existing space that could be renovated to configure around that. So, your total auditorium's twenty thousand square feet.
So, you're talking, knocking out some walls and taking out some classrooms, or you were not talking, going farther to the south?
Um, well.
Outside the building you added on to?
We did do a design. We took the area, wiped the area, and said, this is how big we'd have to expand it to, the size we'd have to touch.
Okay. So, you'd be taking out classrooms to do that?
We added on to some details to figure out which way would make the most sense, as to which way to expand it, and what to make that look like too, as to what walls you'd take out. This was just kind of general, in case something came about from that higher.
These are definitely not locked in enough.
Correct.
Sure.
Would that double the size? Would that double the size of the auditorium?
It would definitely, it would double, should double the size. What's our current size? I believe that should.
We assumed in looking at it and just kind of spacing on the drums, we had that's about ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, so, it would double it, yeah. And let me, let me just mention one thing. So, the details that Mike is reading off of, once we narrow it to a scenario through public input and so forth, then, we will definitely share all of the nitty details down to, okay, this is how much the auditorium is, you know, so that way, you can get that number of what we're going to ask our.
Okay, so, how many students are in that? Can you put, how many people can you put in that auditorium now?
Roughly, you'd say three hundred?
Three. That's what I was thinking, three hundred. So, if you double, that's only still only six hundred people in there, right?
Well, but your stage wouldn't necessarily double. It would get bigger, but I think you'd more than double the C D if you doubled the square footage.
Correct.
So, six hundred. And weren't we talking about nine hundred?
Nine hundred.
Well, that's.
And that's what she's saying, but the stage is still.
The stage would stay the same.
Right.
Stay the same, so the doubling would be seating, so more than six hundred.
So, maybe.
Probably closer to seven fifty.
Seven.
And again, is that, if that's a, and obviously, it is a priority, then, we'll get some more numbers, and we'll come back and say, okay, this is the square footage, or this is the design?
Right.
Yeah, we could, you know, take a look at what it takes, what can it take to get to nine ninety-nine square feet for seating.
Sure.
I guess you'd get to that with that size.
It, I know seating is one of the bigger issues. Is the stage suitable for what you use it? I mean.
Our stage, no.
Stage and backstage, so would this be part of that? I mean, I guess the bigger question is, do we, is using the existing space the best versus?
So, we would be needing to expand the stage.
Include the backstage as well.
And that's what, when we get to the details.
I know, I know, we're kind of drilling, yeah.
So, you're asking questions that aren't in this.
Right.
Right.
But I'm assuming that the cost is cheaper because you're using somewhat of an existing footprint, as opposed to a whole new footprint. Am I correct?
That, correct, it's always, it's always cheaper.
So, is it less expensive to build on to that auditorium than if you did a gym auditorium combined up at the top?
Well, at that point, you're still going to have some repurposing costs for your existing auditorium, but, you know, it's cheaper to repurpose your existing.
Your existing space.
Than doing a structure.
And you can get to nine ninety-nine within that structure?
Well, possibly. I think you might need another five thousand square feet to add on to it for prop stage, places where they build props and do additional things. That just, that's not, we didn't have that kind of information to be able to utilize it. We just hope that being able to double your space and get you something for.
For this.
So.
I guess, I guess, from my, the reason I'm so drilling kind of in on this, is that if this is an opportunity to fix that auditorium, we got to do it right.
That's what I think.
And that's, and that's definitely our goal, and that's, we will definitely have future conversations before we go, before we decide on the bond amount. Okay, what do you, what do you want?
Yeah, because I'm wondering what that cost would be for, because when the insurance talk, you know, they talked about the building, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just should add, what you guys are doing today, you're in the right spot.
Okay.
You kind of got to decide what it is you want to do, and then, from that direction, that's when John and I would engage the team to expand. And then, we go through with you guys, we go through and we look at, okay, the different scenarios for that particular selection too, so, does it mean we're adding everything, and everything, you know, there's going to be, probably scenario that goes with that because I have to make a decision on that on a later basis. So, I think today is just kind of.
But this number, you think, is a, is a good middle ground, that if we needed to go?
Yeah, it's a good spot for me.
I just don't want to come in way under, and then, we have to turn around and say, oh, well, you really should have done this, and you needed this much more.
Right, and I guess if you know the goal of getting to at least nine hundred, would you say nine hundred? And with the, with the, with a decent, with, with, not decent, but with a very efficient stage in that, so you feel like this is a good number with that?
Okay, that answers my question then.
And again, I mean, and that's, at the public hearing, I'll maybe mention that same thing. Again, these numbers can fluctuate up ten or low ten percent, fifteen percent, and so forth, and if this is important, then, we can, we can ask them to, you know, go back and sharpen their pencils before the end of this week even.
Well, it sounds to me like that they understand the goal.
They've done a great job. They put a lot of time in that, so.
Okay, thank you.
And hoping to all too is just changing that language, to say expansion, not expansion to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, again, as you follow, you can see these scenarios go in columns, correct? And so, another thing that the board will decide on is the bond term. And we're not locked into ten or twenty, we could go fifteen, we could go seventeen. I just need those numbers, and then, we'll get our bond experts to price those for us. What I, we really wanted to put in there, again, it's the tax impact, the annual tax impact per one hundred thousand of taxable value. You can see those amounts, but underneath that, again, just like our personal mortgages going from a thirty-year to a fifteen-year, there's a lot of interest savings. So, there's that two-sided coin. You want, you know, the lower the taxes, the more the interest you're going to pay, and so, but you pay a little bit more tax, and maybe you can save some, you know, some serious, significant money.
Are there prepayment penalties for bond payments?
There are not.
So, let's see, if you did a seventeen, but we paid more.
Correct. No, there's.
You can drop, okay.
There's not.
What's that?
We paid one off earlier.
Did we?
Correct.
Per century, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, once you get into these bond terms, you can, you can pay them off.
So, this, this impact that you're showing right here, the anticipated bond right here, is that with the bond, with the?
Yes, the bond levy equalization.
The equalization.
Correct.
It's reflected in the twenty-seven.
And again, that's another form that, okay, once we lock into the scenario, we'll click quickly decide on the bond term, and then, we will, I mean, this will be a public document, you know, that we get from our bond experts, and, you know, they'll try to estimate, okay, if we pass it November, we'll sell the bond in January, okay, what are those interest rates going to look like in January, and add a little bit of cushion there.
So, these are variable?
What?
Bond is a variable?
Until you sell. Yes, I mean, just, just like a home mortgage, right? It's.
Well, you can get both, but.
Sure, okay, sorry. I always try to get fixed.
But for a bond, it's, it's like a variable rate until you, like an arm.
Yeah, just as, just as interest rates go up and down. Normally, they've been going up until we sell and we lock in. And then, but what will variable rate for the taxes is that bond levy equalization. You know, it's pretty high at twenty-seven percent this year, but in previous years, it's been down maybe twenty percent, and that'll impact our taxpayers by a few dollars.
I have one other question about the impact for taxpayers, and this might be jumping ahead, and it might be information that you don't have or haven't thought of, but maybe I'll just ask it.
Sure, please.
Then, when we have the forum, we'll know where to go. With the levy that we currently have passed, would we be able to not do that because of the fact that if we build this or build the new high school, well, I guess in this scenario of building a new high school is the only case that we would be able to consider not doing that, just because if we're coming out of elementary schools and selling them, we could sell those buildings to pay for, you know, kind of like pay that renovation for the building that they're moving to. You know, if we, if that's only in the, only in the scenario of a new high school, would we be able to give that up so that that would not be a burden?
So, so, again, we always try to just, you know, with our, we try to keep our taxpayers in mind, and just ask for exactly, you know, what we need. I don't think we can give it up totally, because, again, we still have twenty-three other schools, even if there is some domino effects from, from.
Right, just for the land sales.
From the sales, but, you know, that might take.
Building sales.
You know, that might take a while, so, there might be some tax savings down the road, but I wouldn't necessarily.
I wouldn't make on it.
I wouldn't make on it, I wouldn't probably say that.
Is it something that we can't, we can't talk about that then? Or we should?
We can talk about whatever you'd like, but I don't anticipate.
Why do you just think?
I don't anticipate recommending that we lower that, just because, again, we have so many other schools.
Right, but a brand-new school, like, you know, like, if Highland, if a new school is built, that just doesn't have the repairs that the other school has, and then, it's a domino effect that you're getting all the kids into better schools and selling all that. That's why, kind of what I was thinking, is that domino effect could also affect, if they, if we were to do that, which maybe we won't, I don't know, but if we decide on going for a bond with a new high school, can we also give up that levy just for that time when we do this because of that domino effect of getting the money for the other?
I think you have, once you took something away, it would be very difficult to bring back.
I understand that. I understand that, but it's also a matter of trust, you know, in the community, the same.
A reduction possibly, but just to eliminate it, I don't think.
Correct.
But I think that's getting ahead.
Correct, and that's a little, and we always evaluate, and we did, the board did that last fall.
It is a question that will come up, I feel like, in the public, is, are you still going to ask for the levy?
And I think an honest answer is, we don't know yet.
I understand that, but I think.
I don't think you could answer that question.
I think we have to answer that if we want them to vote for.
And if you were to put me on the spot and say that, then, I would say, yes, we're still going to ask for that levy. It might be reduced, you know, slightly, but I, you know.
Presently, our levy makes up a.
Presently, our levy makes up about twelve percent of our budget, so to move forward and say, we'll just discontinue that, it would be difficult, because that pays a lot for, you know, the day-to-day operations of the district, so.
So I guess instead.
Talking of the supplemental levy or the school plan?
See, I was, I was thinking.
Um, well, either or, either one or both, whatever, but, but I guess as long as we let them know what, so when we sell this property, what, what benefit is that to them? It, maybe instead of saying it will get rid of the levy, we'll say it will go straight to the bond, it will go straight to bond payment.
For, for that, for that one year.
It will not go, it won't go to other projects, it won't go to savings, it will go straight to bond payment.
And, and the board will definitely can decide that, and we'll communicate that with, with court.
And I don't know if we can decide that, I'm just wondering what, what we can say, or what we can.
I think it would be difficult to make a guarantee on that.
Oh, we could make a guarantee on that.
Yeah.
Correct.
Because even with those. Really know what's. Facility levy, that's part of the SIP process, which is an annual review of our maintenance schedule, and in fact, as we get into this just a little bit, and you, yeah, you're right. What Jonathan and I had talked about was with school plan facilities, can we pull some of that money in every year? So that was a ten-year levy, I think we're in year two now, so just forecasting out to, you know, three years, we said we could use two million dollars from school plan facilities to push into this project.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Those monies are so integral to the budget.
That makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so I, I think that gives us a little bit of flexibility, because typically, we spend five to five and a half million dollars in our school plan facilities levy every year, so that wouldn't totally, you know, cut it out altogether, but it would cause us to prioritize some things so that we can put more money toward Highland project.
Right, and so, yeah, 'cause I don't want to see the budget go down, that's not at all what I'm saying, I'm just saying that if we can, if, 'cause on the second page, you know, we talk about what are we gonna do to be fiscally responsible, you know, we're gonna sell this, and we're gonna sell this, well, where will that money go?
Yeah, so, and, and in there, I think it's probably the first or second column, uh, second column.
So I think that's what we need to answer. The sale.
Six million dollars, two million dollars for three years, and certainly that could be extended to make up the differences we go along, and, and you're right, we could just put that.
Or just say that we'll put a percentage toward the bond repayment or something.
Yeah, again, I, I would ask the board to allow that to be flexible, and you vote on it annually through the maintenance schedule when we bring that to you, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, so again, it's kind of following the same format, uh, again, just a reminder for this bond, you know, it takes sixty, super majority, sixty-six and two-thirds percent of our entire district, so from north to south, east and west, um, forty thousand roughly registered voters, two-thirds of them that vote have to say yes, and so the scenario two benefits, it adds an additional project of the, um, improved gym facility at Century High School to.
So that's not a new gym? It could be enough for a new gym?
Correct, so again, we're just dealing with squ- square footages, just like we did the auditorium, we just added that, and we know how, you know, Mike and Shay established how much that was for there, we don't know what that necessarily looks like.
So you don't know if it's renovating or building a new?
Would, I, I'm pretty sure it was renovating, Mike and Shay, can you?
Yeah, you have the original renovation of fifty-one thousand square feet, and then you had a.
This is for Century.
Oh, for Century, I'm sorry.
Century, yeah, yeah, no, you're good, you're good.
That's in real too.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think it was just an increase.
Be able to tell them, what is that?
Correct, and, and we will.
Is it a park or is it a new gym?
And we will, we'll definitely, you know, again, as we narrow in.
Century is twenty-two thousand square feet.
That's a new one?
Like, so a new gym that just three walls attached, okay, yes, that's great, 'cause, um, 'cause what, the way I understand it is that everybody does fit in that gym, it's just that they need a second gym, is that right?
I, I know.
There's, there, it's.
They don't fit? Oh, okay, okay, so that needs to be, so it is actually a renovation of that gym and not a new gym then?
No, it'd probably be a new gym, right?
It's a new gym.
Adding a gym to the outside, the south end of that building.
Adding a gym. Correct.
Oh, a new, larger gym.
Well, at twenty-two thousand square feet, that may not be large enough, I, you know, again, we're, we're kind of trying to.
So they need to be taking money away.
To, to, with that, expand the existing gym and make it very large, or at this, in, in a way that, uh.
Or like at Thunder Ridge, have that, the second gym not have any spectator spaces.
Or it may be, it may be on top and added, so here's the gym, and add it on to the side so that there's more seating at the sides, you push it in, then you can use it for activities, so.
Can you weigh in on twenty-two thousand square feet for the size of a gym, what type of competitive gym that would be?
You should be able to get a competitive gym with some ancillary gym space for that size.
Yeah, I mean, where you might get scrapped and have to repurpose stuff is, and not locker rooms for multiple gyms like that, or like.
Well, they already have that, they but built the team rooms, and so they can use that for whatever else.
But the, the team rooms are not through winter, I mean, there's a minimal heater there just to keep the pipes there, but that's, it's not through the winter, but, yeah.
Wow.
It's a good size, it's just whether it's, it's big enough.
And, and it's just.
Hey, this is big enough for a gymnasium area, whether we renovate the existing one and put an ancillary gym on with this new, or whether we do a new gym and turn the existing one into an ancillary gym.
But, but really, but really, the bottom line is, it's enough to make a bigger gym and a smaller gym, that's it?
It was too contrary to decide that, that's what we think's the largest.
Okay.
Sure.
That's kind of really.
So, so again, as soon as we, you say, yep, we want to do something, you know, south of town, then, okay, now what does it look like, make sure that twenty-two hundred doesn't need to be twenty-five thousand square feet, you know, and the numbers fluctuate just a little bit, but again, we'll work on that as soon as we get direction. I've got it on my desk.
I have this book.
Yeah, it does.
Does it have square footage?
It, it, it does for the entire school, but not for gym.
Oh, but it doesn't have it for like this place.
It's sitting on my desk, if you want to grab it, but, I, no, I, I don't know, but again, but again, we can definitely tweak that number, I mean, we'll, we'll definitely, we're not locked in.
Right, well, I mean, isn't now our time to kind of make, make sure that we're, before the public?
Um, get, right now is kind of help the scopes, you know.
Well, to know, make sure our numbers are right?
Um, we will do some more fine tuning of the numbers, so this, these are definitely not locked in, okay, if you choose, scenario two, we're definitely, it might not be exactly.
Right, I just want to, yeah, we just want to know what the options are, so as long as we know that that scenario two makes it so that they have a gym that's a big enough capacity for the school, and then another gym that's smaller.
Yep, and again, plus or minus ten percent.
So as long as we know that.
I would say both the numbers that they've given you for the auditorium and the gym are good conservative numbers.
Yeah.
What, what the actual design will look like, who knows, but those are good conservative numbers.
Okay.
So looking at the gym, typical basketball forty, ninety feet, it's like you got maybe ten feet each side, so if you go much way, that's, it's fourteen thousand four hundred, it's not Highland, I'm guessing, looking at the.
They have a extra above, they have seating above.
Right, but it's, yeah, so your square footage size is right around fifty thousand square feet on that one.
The Century estimate is like, is probably just a little bit larger than what you have at Highland.
So that's, that's good to know, that.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's good to know.
Are we, are we headed in the right, are we, are we doing what we need to, okay, so, so again, you can see that, the, the, the bond terms there, the, the tax impact, the interest savings, of course, is the bigger numbers, those interest, um, total interest is, are getting big, um, and also the anticipated timelines. You know, so we're still looking at two to three, two to three years, it's, um, closer to three, obviously, three even a little bit after the, at, um, the start of the third school year. Okay, um, you, I'm doing all the talking, so do you want to talk to, okay. So again, scenario four, or, could you jump in there, oh, yep, two, yep, three, um, would basically be, uh, to build a new high school, repurpose the existing facility. Again, you'd still use, all three of these, you'd use insurance proceeds to help, um, again, we're combine some elementary schools, relocate some, uh, elementary schools, middle schools, and so forth, and so we tried to, again, kind of look at the cost of that, of that school, uh, we'll have to, you know, purchase the property, which is, of course, a variable as well.
So what would that do for, if you put, I don't know how many elementary schools you want to do away with to put them up there in one, how, what's that gonna look like for busing?
It, it definitely has some serious challenges in, in busing, for sure.
And then there was talking.
You're going to less schools from farther away.
Correct, so it just impacts the number where we're, yeah.
So I mean, with a give and take, would it be all bad? Or would it just?
Well, no, I mean, if you're right across the street, it's, it's great.
I'm just wondering, like, I mean, yeah, you're saying the bad part, but what's, is there any good?
Our schools, the elementaries especially, are considered, you know, essentially a neighborhood school.
School, yeah.
So you're going to have a, a majority of those children that walk, um, whereas if you're transporting, you're going to be transporting more, so you add to your fleet. Hopefully, we can get drivers, which has been a bit of a challenge, even this year, I mean, we're, we're struggling to have drivers.
Yeah, currently, I mean, I would, on some of our schools, I would beg to differ, but they are not, a lot of them are not neighborhood schools, Franklin?
Elementary.
Elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was.
Well, okay, so even elementary, Wilcox doesn't really have, I mean, I don't know how many walkers they have, I don't know.
They're right.
Um, but if you're talking about other things that we've talked about, adding on to Gate, adding on to, um.
Edahow.
Edahow, that's the exact same scenario, that you're taking kids from other areas and bringing them. So it, it's kind of the same scenario in my, in the way I see it, I, unless there's something that I'm missing. 'Cause if you're, if you're shutting down schools to build on to Edahow, it's the same thing as shutting down schools to go somewhere else, is that right?
It is, you're right, yeah, right. Anytime you were making a move.
Right.
Yeah, you're going to have transportation, and they would be very similar, yeah.
So in this scenario, what are you envisioning the use of Highland for, a middle school?
We just put in the two ideas that came forward from the board through our discussions, yeah, so we, we haven't locked in anything about what be, further discussion is, we talked about, you would be affecting a number of attendance zones or boundaries as we work through that.
So, um, that's something that has been asked, a lot of people have asked, what would you do with Highland, and there's this thing going around, a lot of people are misunderstanding that one of our options is to tear it down.
Yeah, I've heard that too.
A lot of people have been saying that, I've heard it from a lot of different, completely different sources, that's why I think we have to say, what are we gonna use Highland for? In this scenario, in this public forum, and I think, so I guess now is a good time to talk about it, but I think we have to say, what will it be used for, what is the best case? Is it a?
It's gonna be a school.
It's gonna be, right, but I don't want to leave that off, because then that, you know, people in their mind think, oh, yeah, they're tearing that down, no, we need to address that, and say what we're gonna do with it, and then that way, it addresses everybody's, what are you gonna do with it, and are you gonna tear it down, it addresses all those.
Yeah, so we just put these two ideas there just from our discussions, but we, we have not made a determination.
Well, it was either, it was either gonna be a, right.
Schools there or moving Alameda and using Alameda and.
Relocate Alameda.
So put Alameda at Highland as a middle school.
C M F for combined, so, yeah, but I guess it's just not clear, what will Highland be used for, Highland would be a.
Middle school.
In that scenario, a middle school.
Highland would be a middle school, so is there any other scenario that we want to look at right now, as a, as an elementary, or not?
Again, that's totally up to the board, you heard some ideas about.
Is that something that?
I mean, that was the other option, is whether you made it a super elementary school, um, but, I, I, I mean, that was, I mean, I think those are the two options on the table, and I think you just can throw that out there.
Well, you'd be pulling people from a lot farther away if you've got those three elementary schools very close to each other, you'd be pulling people from a lot farther away than using.
Alameda?
Than using, than using Alameda, because that's not that far away from a lot of those.
So then having Highland be the middle school.
Right, there's no middle school in that part of town, so to me, in my mind, that makes the most sense unless there's something that makes more sense. If, if we did that scenario, so is it safe to say that we would make Highland a middle school, so there's not, there, well, we don't know what we're gonna use that for yet, I mean, I think.
I think it makes the most sense over a, a super elementary school, 'cause there's resources there that a middle school would use versus elementary school.
Right, and Highland, and high school kids would still use some of the, some of the thing, you know, things, it's a tennis court.
Wouldn't have to build the playground.
I don't know if anybody uses the tennis courts, but, yeah, yeah, exactly, you wouldn't be building a playground, and there's kinds of things, but is, is that safe to say that, or is that not something that any? I think we need to comment.
And I think we talk about it, but I think it's not.
Like John said, or like Jonathan says, it, you know, that's, that's a possibility, that's one of the things that we need to talk about, and we're not.
I mean, the other thing is, is I think we kind of have, right, before we get too far down, I mean, I think those are the ideas that are being thrown out, we'll have the public forum, gets, get, hear more from what the public, 'cause the public may just say they want to just go with scenario two.
Right.
That's right.
I understand that, but if we don't, if we're not clear what scenario three is, I think it's hard for them to put, wrap their mind around, oh, washy, washy.
Sure, yeah, and if you want to narrow it down to eight.
Maybe, we don't know, like, we're very clear on scenario one and two, and I think we should be very clear on scenario three for as well.
And if you said, okay, let's consider this idea seriously about a middle school, then you would have four corners of our city covered, again, you're going to be talking about boundaries and realigning.
Because, right, 'cause the, the kids that go to Highland, the parents are gonna say, well, now, my kid can't walk to school, but the benefit is, the middle schooler kids can walk to.
There you go.
So you have to be able to say, what's the benefit?
Yeah, but then we, exactly, yeah, and as you mentioned.
Where does Alameda pull from, what, what schools feed into Alameda middle school?
Edahow, Gate City.
Edahow?
No.
I thought Edahow went Franklin.
Ellis, that's?
No.
Ellis.
Ellis, um, Saranga, Tendoy.
Wow.
Lewis and Clark.
Wow, Ellis, that's a long way.
It's a long, skinny.
Wow, so that would benefit all those kids over there in the Ellis.
They can't walk still, I mean, they're still gonna be riding the bus.
They will be, but it will be a lot closer, beyond that side of.
Would it be closer for them to go to Franklin?
Town.
From Ellis?
Yeah.
No.
No.
A lot closer to Highland.
I don't, I can't picture where.
So Highland, yeah, Highland's like half as far.
Oh, right, right, on Siphon Road, that's right.
Siphon Road, yeah, I mean, Highland would be half as far, I mean, that's, I would say.
Right.
So in scenario three, just, are we saying take off combined elementary schools?
Yeah.
And just put Highland would be repurposed as a middle school?
Middle school.
Well, but then we have to say, and Alameda would be combined elementary school, so we can get all the kids out of.
Well, that's what it says, and that what it says?
Right, so it's just taking.
It just isn't clear about what.
Relocate Alameda school and use Alameda's, Alameda's school.
For the combined elementary school.
It says combined elementary.
Yeah, I would just say to be clear, very, very clear what Highland will be, 'cause people want to know that, what are you gonna use that for?
Yeah.
I have, I've heard that everywhere.
So maybe just reallocate, relocate Alameda Middle School to Highland High School, just add that to it.
Or change the boundaries, I mean, I don't know what that would mean, because it wouldn't be just the whole school wouldn't be going there, it, 'cause it would be part of Franklin, part of Alameda.
Well, that'll be a whole nother.
Well, I don't know, you need to change the boundaries.
Right?
You would, you would have to redraw the boundaries.
Right, right, so that's why you can't really say all of Alameda's kids are gonna go to.
Well, we do say that later on, with the enrollment strategy, I'm not, that, that any of these decisions may impact enrollment.
Right. Right, right, but I think right on the bullets, I think we need to say, if we agree, Highland will be a middle school, Alameda will be an elementary, very clear, that we can, that way kids, other, otherwise they don't understand, I, I just think that they don't understand what the benefit is to elementary kids, and the benefit is that they, we shut down old, old schools, at least three, what we were, we were told that we could potentially.
Boy, but then if you moved it to Alameda, you wouldn't be able to strut three, you could do two.
Yeah, well, I mean, what about, um, like the Head Start school, and then Washington, and then, you know, like.
I mean, Lincoln?
You couldn't do Lincoln.
Lincoln, we've done so much over there.
And do that, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know what other schools.
I think you'd probably, if you're gonna say that, I think you'd probably have to identify which schools.
Yeah, what would fit.
And then the next question is, what are you gonna do with those buildings?
Sell them, because that would be part of the commitment, is that we don't pay them.
Well, I mean, the effort to sell them, I mean, there's no guarant.
Well, I know.
You'd be sitting on a.
We don't say how much money we'll get, we would never promise anything like that, but we would say, we would commit that, yes, we would sell them, because that's part of the commitment with this, if the, if, with the new high school.
But you could make it dependent upon the sale, I mean, if the sale happen, I mean, they could sit for sale for years.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, I don't mean, I don't mean we promise that it'll get sold, all we, all I mean is that we promise we'll put it up for sale.
They did.
Years and years and years.
Yeah. Right. 'Cause there, I mean, there's no benefit. Cause there, I mean, there's no benefit to us to hold on to an old building, is there?
No, no, and it would, it would be kind of that, that, you know, that kind of commitment to the public, that we would be able to sell.
We would endeavor to sell.
Endeavor to sell, well, and when you say, I'm gonna sell my house, it doesn't mean like, my house is going to be sold, it means you put a for sale sign up.
So, so do you put on the bullet which schools, I mean, do you dare say, to be determined?
Or just say a minimum of two elementaries?
I would have to say do be determined, because we have to do the boundaries and see what-
Just numbers.
One, I mean, you could probably do one for sure, but the other one? It'll have to be bound, it'll have to be-
Well, it's really, I mean, you can look at capacities and make a determination on, based on capacities. I just think that scenario three four is too washy washy, and if it's too washy washy, it's not really gonna be, it's not gonna look, um, good. And maybe it won't look good anyway.
We could just say what schools we presently draw from for Alameda, but certainly Franklin's going to be affected when you remove, you know, Fairway, Satterfield, essentially what's Highland area now that attends Franklin.
Yeah.
That would totally, you know, move that around.
Yes, it would gain from other places.
And I imagine that whole redrawing of boundaries, it's not just-
Divided out.
I mean, you gotta find out where those kids are and how they're-
It wouldn't be.
Oh, yeah, none of this would be specific.
And that's, that's where I was gonna say, again, I haven't been through boundaries, but I I've been through even the gateway being, you know, what, four, eight, six teachers, you know, moving. I mean, there's the, the domino effect is, is, is big, I mean, it does impact. So, the one thing I did wanna mention is at least a dollar amount is only for Highland. So if there was any, you know, as we'll have moving costs, we'll have, if we need to upgrade a little Alameda, obviously they'll need a playground, it, several playgrounds probably at Alameda.
It doesn't have, doesn't it combine?
No.
There's no playground.
The, there is an elementary across the field.
Right, they can't use, have too many kids at that small like a-
So, again, that's probably small in the relatively hundreds of-
Right, I was thinking.
But anyway, that's, I just wanted to do that.
So-
It just, it just is important to have a vision of, okay, so if you build a new high school, what does that mean? Just, I mean, it's a pretty simple question, what does it mean? It means we shut two elementaries down, I think that's safe to say, we shut two elementaries down and sell them. Because, because on this, it says we haven't gotten new students, you know, it's been the same to to decrease. And then people say, well, then why do you need a new school? We're not, it's not about a new school in addition to all that we have. It's a new school with the effect of being a domino effect benefiting all the schools, so that everybody will be in a better place. Everybody will move up into a better place.
And that's the definition of a better place is what will be determined.
Yeah, newer.
If somebody-
Newer facility, a newer facility, cause right, isn't the idea to-
Well, but it's also not gonna be for everybody, but, yeah.
Unless I, unless everybody thinks Washington's still a good-
Clear or without too many commitments, so.
Okay, I was gonna ask, one more question, if we make the existing Highland High School an Alameda Middle School, is the gym big enough to make it for a gym, a, a middle school?
A small gym?
You'd have to increase, um, capacity for, um, observers.
Would we have to add a new gym?
Could we just add one side?
Perhaps, there's a way, I don't know, the wall that, you know, we're going to shore up on the east side of the small gym, I, in my mind, you would just have to push that out and add seating for spectators that direction. Because otherwise you're going into the media center.
Right.
Yeah.
So, would, would we end?
It is a, it is a, right, it is a high school size media center, so we could take some of that.
Yeah, I think that would be more difficult.
I think it'd be more expensive, the roofing isn't.
Construction, but-
And then we still have to build a cafeteria.
Correct, that's where I was going as well, yep, and they use that, those spaces.
And that auditorium is probably still not middle school sufficient.
And, and again-
Potentially.
A middle school doesn't need an auditorium. None of our middle schools have one.
Oh, so you could make the cafeteria in the auditorium.
Perhaps, maybe.
I know, that's what I'm saying, is I think we can use the footprint.
Right.
I, I do not think we need to build a new anything, I think we can expand the gym.
It's a middle school.
And repurpose, make, and even like, I don't know if you've seen Highland's media center, but all it is is basically like the three classrooms upstairs.
Oh, yes, yes, I have.
And so if we took that library, the media center, and did the same thing, put it like three classrooms, that could be a gigantic cafeteria. So what I'm saying is, the needs, really, we could use what we have for the needs.
And then the choir room.
Yeah, there would have to be, maybe that would be a better use of-
But aren't there more classrooms than a middle school would use potentially?
And there, but the auditorium could be repurposed for band and choir in some way.
So what we did in the pricing is we figured additional twenty thousand square feet for cafeteria or gym addition, because there's a lot of stuff in there. And we did look at that, because we called Jonathan and discussed exactly what you're saying, about band rooms and everything else. But the additional classrooms that were in there, we felt discussing that there could be room inside the existing school, it's so much larger, that there's some other areas that could be repurposed, and we figured that in place.
That's what I would see.
So it's not, I think, set in stone, but we've, we actually priced that for this number, with some of that stuff in there.
Okay, are there, are there places where the ceiling can be raised, or is it just?
Auditorium.
The auditorium, yeah. Anything is possible.
Now that they just put sprinklers on them.
Okay.
So you'll notice too, um, I don't know that Mr. Ball's pointing this out, I don't think we got quite that far, but the term of the bond changed right here. We, we went twenty and thirty. And, and you'll see, again, that reflects in the amount for hundred thousand certainly, as well as your interest over that time period.
And the length of the project, you're adding a whole nother year on.
Another year, yeah.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for those, yep.
Can I ask, sorry, just, so, some of the, some of the contracts, so, we go out another year, so these outside places that we have identified for moving choir and band, I know this is difficult for those kids that are having to spend their whole year displaced, but are those places that would support an additional year, I mean, if we ask them, see what I'm, you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, I am.
You know, so is, is Calvary Chapel gonna be willing to extend if we needed to?
I, I believe that, yeah, exactly, not having been in there experiencing it, but yes, I think they would, they're more than accommodating. And so, ob- obviously, if we were to choose that, we would, you know, we would tell them that upfront there.
Right.
But, yes, I don't, I don't think that's a hindrance.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so this last scenario was kind of the, yeah, definitely needs to be defined a little bit more. Uh, new high school, obviously, um, repurposing Highland, um, and then any additional projects, you know, that, the Century Gym, that's kind of, when we, you know, tried to get these numbers, I think we just took our best guess, cause we knew how much the Century Gym was, we added that on there.
I would just-
The, the big one.
I would like to suggest, and everybody can weigh in, I would like to suggest that that scenario four only be the new high school and the Century Gym only. Nobody likes, we just want other money for, nobody likes that. Nobody's gonna go for that.
So that's- Well, we have to, we have to have money to repurpose Highland for a middle school, right?
And as long as it's very well defined, that this much for this, this much for this, but not other projects. I don't think that, no, anybody will go for that.
That's why we're having that discussion today, because we need a job to narrow that down for us.
So, three plus Century.
And, yeah, that, that number down there was-
Scenario three.
Scenario three plus the gym.
Right.
Cause that's only pro- project.
So that's, that's the whole setting.
That's the only thing we knew for sure that we had talked about, the rest was like, eh, the rest is nebulous.
So I think maybe the only details you ought to put in here is that there might be some, the, the, the things that will need to happen at Highland, if it's made into a middle school, is like what we talked about.
Right here, building a new school, repurpose existing high school and include-
Cause what will that repurposing entail? I think those kind of details, in generic, general, but I think some of that detail would help the public to understand.
Right, so right now, it says build a new high school and repurpose addition, repurpose, repurpose current high school, which covers that middle school.
Right.
But then I think we have to add-
I, I'm just suggesting maybe a little more specific, we, we, the gym needs to be enhanced a little bit for middle school purposes.
And then-
And the auditorium or a cafeteria.
Instead of saying additional projects, just say Century Gym.
Yeah, we would get rid of that additional project.
Just Century Gym. Okay.
No, I think these are very good options for the public to kind of-
So are you, are you comfortable with the four, let me talk about process, you comfortable with the four options?
I am.
As long as we, as long as we just make sure that we have those details in the three and four, but not too many, cause then it's just-
Don't wanna nail us down too specifically, but yet, so that there's an understanding of what it is, what the vision would look like.
Yeah, I just want them to have their questions answered, what are you gonna do with Highland? What about the, you know, just the questions that they have, what would they be?
Would anything have to, other than playgrounds at Alameda, what would have, for elementary?
The toilets all just got raised, and the sinks all just got raised, so some of those would have to be dropped, so the elementary could use them.
But people can't.
Yeah, there's no elevator, there's no, um, I think they put, nope, I think they put a chair lift.
What about a lift?
I think there's a chair lift to get to the gym, and that's it.
So you didn't have to have those for a middle school, but you do for an elementary school?
No, I'm just, that's, I'm just, you asked me what's there, so I'm just, a chair lift that gets to the gym, but not to the cafeteria, so-
But we would be fine with leaving it that way, is that what?
That I don't know, if we repurpose it as a, a new building, I don't know, maybe, interesting.
Once you start to remodel spaces, sometimes the requirements can get a-
Oh, right, cause you don't have the grandfathered option.
Correct, we lose it.
Right, okay, so you wouldn't have the grandfathering, um-
And, and even if it's just still a school, I mean, you're not necessarily-
It depends how, it depends usually the cost of your renovations, and once it crosses a certain threshold, you can fire the upgrades.
I see.
I don't, other than, other than raising, other than lowering the toilets and lowering the sinks, I don't think it need to be renovated much at all.
Right, I would-
Cause at one time it was an elementary school, and then became a middle school, and so it's-
Don't let them, this is, I don't know where I learned, let's do this whole process, so again, if, if it's not, we know if that's sprinkled.
I don't know.
So, if it's not sprinkled, you're K through two, I think, I'm looking, I can't remember where I learned this, anyway, K through two has to stay on the first floor. So, just because they can, uh-
And would that be a problem?
Uh, uh, given, have to look at classroom sizes and, and so forth, but I know there is some limitations.
And we don't want to say something that is-
And that was from our building inspector, if it's sprinkled all the way through, then they can be in any floor.
Interesting.
So.
I'm comfortable with these four options. There's eight classrooms on that floor.
There's what?
Eight classrooms on that floor.
I think, I'd even be okay with getting rid of one.
Be sufficient for the-
The first one?
Yeah.
Cause not for a three by, if you had a three by three, so three, each grade level, you'd need nine classrooms for kindergarten.
So we'd have to make sure on that, then, find out that for sure, right?
So I picked up on a side comment, I think we should explore that, because again, the, the fewer amount of scenarios that we give to the public, I think the more input you'll have, so.
Did you hear, did you hear what I said? I said, I would be a-
It's worth discussion.
Yeah, I'd be okay with getting rid of scenario one, because Century really does need a new gym, that gym is a middle school sized gym. Um, and then, I mean, and then more people are gonna be interested in, in this.
It seems like such a big jump, though, can we, can we lower?
The cost of the gym.
Right, a twenty-two thousand square foot gym.
But the gym was already in the SIP plan, anyway, and so this essentially-
Do we have to add that much, is what I'm-
But I don't know how, go ahead.
So, so it was, it was just an idea.
Hasn't been budgeted, hasn't been-
Not, not even budgeted, correct, we would probably come to the board.
And I think we added it because we wanted this, the bond to appeal to more in the community.
Exactly, but what I'm saying is, do we have to add that much money to this? Can't we then go back and add more from the SIP to this, if we do the gym, on scenario two?
Again, at about five million, five to six million, already taking two, will eliminate a number of projects. And you don't wanna get too far off your maintenance schedule, because otherwise then you're gonna have roofing problems, pavement, concrete, et cetera.
So I don't really understand what you just said, and taking off.
So, uh, Jonathan, might I correct that our SIP, in my experience, has typically been five to six million dollars.
Oh, you're saying I-
Plan, yeah, for every year.
So it would be a few years before we would do a Century Gym.
Yeah, two was being careful, I don't think we wanted to push it up too much higher than that, just because we need to, again, maintain our regular maintenance schedule.
I see, I was just thinking that, just what, what Heather said, if we were planning to use that money.
Yeah, it hadn't been budgeted, it was just one of our items in kind of the five to ten year plan.
And it was a big, it was a big ask, and if we couldn't have saved it, then we'd come to the board and say, okay, we do need a loan for four million, yeah.
I, I, I'd be fine with dropping one, scenario one.
I was thinking, yeah, I mean, uh, what do you think? I don't know.
It's still an option for people to consider.
It's, it's, um-
Could be a write-in option.
It's, it's hard, because right now, scenario one makes sense, because Highland is the one that burned, you know, so scenario one does make sense. Then when you, I, I don't know what the public will think, if that makes more sense that you're talking about Highland.
And again, it's that, that bar is high, again, I-
Right.
I failed once and I passed once, and it, it, it hurts when you're sixty percent say yes, and you still fail.
Sixty-five point five.
Yeah, sixty, yeah, well, and Bonneville was only, what, just a handful of votes, and they're, they're going again at the end of the, end of the month. Yeah, and that one hurts, and so if there's any way to include anything, but, but again, it counts at a cost, right?
Right, I know.
But I also think the Century Gym will benefit-
It will.
-the whole community in the events, or when games play there.
Right, but does it have to be that much, like, bigger than high school, than Highland's gym?
The, the gyms at Century, they're right next to each other, correct? So there's the big gym and the small gym, you could make, take the walls out maybe and make that one big gym and then add a smaller gym.
That's what I'm saying, is can we reduce this number?
Instead of putting, you know, adding the twenty-two hun- or twenty-two thousand square feet, maybe doing a little smaller gym.
But maybe yours cost should be almost the same.
Well, that's what they need to ask, they need to tell.
I'm just speaking from an A D, it, it's worth paying for the extra gym, I promise you, and, and that gym. Uh, Franklin, just let us know that the Highland gym's between ten thousand and fifteen thousand, so you're getting an amazing gym, and there's such a shortage on your left, but such a shortage of gyms, you're, it's well worth to put your money into auditoriums and gyms for this, for not just the high schools, but for the community.
For the community, right.
And just remember, when we did that, when Mike did most of this work, when he put all those pricing together, we discussed it in depth, and there's not just a gym space there, you got concessions, you got possibility of additional classrooms.
Bathrooms and locker rooms.
We don't know about locker rooms, so we're trying to give you a conservative number, that hopefully will come down, not the other direction, we don't wanna give you a smaller number of people.
Right, but do we-
So that you have somewhere to work from at a fifty thousand foot level, and start drilling down.
Do we have to have a-
You don't wanna be in that shoebox right now either, you don't, you don't wanna-
Right.
You don't wanna, you're talking to those people that-
Well, that's-
It's not the time to shrink it, now's the time to-
Cause we might have to shrink, uh, sorry, if I can piggyback what Mike said, again, stay big, I mean, if it's reasonable, stay as big as you can, because we might have to shrink it. I mean, if, if it fails with sixty-five percent, okay, do we, do we modify?
Well, then it fails, and we don't get anything.
And even if it passes though, you still shrink it, and your money may come in smaller, although you went out for your vote.
But then we're six months away before we can vote again, if we fail.
If you can do it, and make it smaller and make it cheaper, that's a lot better to the constituents than the other direction where we're-
Oh, I know.
You don't wanna, you don't have that much.
Yeah, I just think scenario one doesn't need to be there, cause we're gonna get more interest if Century's included in that.
All right, yeah, I see that scenario, I see that, I see that reasoning, but I also see the reasoning of, why are we talking about Century? Highland is the one that burned, and so I, I don't know what the, what that would be.
Boy, a lot of people are talking about Century, I can guarantee you that, they're talking about that gym.
We just did renovations of Popeye's, Popeye's gonna be good to go for twenty years. The one thing that Century, there's two big things that Century does not have, a wrestling room, and then a high school sized gym. And if I do, and this should be-
But if you put the high school to a high school gym and you have an extra room.
And the school's amazing, the auditorium's amazing, you don't have to do anything at Century for twenty years, and if you redo Highland the right way, you don't have to, your high schools are taken care of, and it's the most expensive.
How are you getting a wrestling room, just cause you pulled mats into a, the third gym, gotcha, okay.
Gym, just like Irving, when Irving was a school, I don't think you'd like that as a wrestling, but they do, they, they're, I mean, they're rolling out mats and a weight room.
Yeah, it's tiny.
And, and, yeah.
Oh, wow, that would be- Oh, well, that would be.
Travis is correct there.
I, I think, I think that's really, to me, that sounds good because I think we do need to have a broader. I think we need to look at all three high schools and say, what will bring everybody into the future? How can we benefit everybody without having to be something that won't pass? Or, or more than what we need.
Are you good with scenario one being gone?
I am.
I could.
I don't know.
I mean, if somebody's really passionate, I mean, yeah, I, use your red pen. I, let's minimize the.
Uh, what do you guys think?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so then my question is, is the same problem with scenario three?
Um, well, same principle applies.
I know, how's that, you know?
I mean.
Yeah, it's the same, because it's the same as, basically the same as four.
Well, scenario one and three are the same and scenario two and four.
So, so then the bigger question is, who will we turn off because Century's in there? Will it be more of a con? I mean, that's kind of really what you're asking is, will that be a deterrent from somebody voting?
Or, or the price tag.
Or the price.
Right.
It'd be the price tag.
My worry is, right now, do we really need to be talking about, that's all, I don't know. I, I wish I knew.
But I don't think you'll have another opportunity, we won't have another opportunity to enhance Century. I mean, you'll be coming back for another bond and.
Well, I'm not really.
You won't get a second one.
You won't get a second.
I'm thinking about it's will it pass? That's what I'm thinking of.
I think you'll have a better chance. If you, if you throw in Century and you got the south end of town saying, okay, we're gonna get something out of this, you'll probably get a better response to.
And I think, I think that's true.
You know, so here's the other thing, do you just leave this the way it is and we have the public forum?
Let them decide.
And let them, I mean, cause that's not gonna, we, I mean, we're not filling the ballot now, but.
Right, but this is our chance to get public input and I think the whole idea is, if we had less options, we might get a more of a response. Cause we need a lot.
Sure.
Of people responding. We've got people in the community saying, one of our scenarios is to, and, and prominent people that should know saying that they think that Highland, one of the scenarios is to tear Highland down. Like, I don't know where you got that, but.
The word part, yes.
Ask for their.
No, tear it all down and build a new one. That's what, and so that's.
Well, can I ask another question? Um, and it's all, obviously all related. So I'm also here, is the city opening up Bench Road?
We've not heard that.
Okay. There are some realtors in town that are, I mean, there are people now looking to sell their house because they're being told Bench is being opened.
Oh, no, in fact, Jonathan, we're the city.
Can we say that publicly that that, I mean, are we interested?
And our civil engineers that we had go up and, you know, look at the parking area, which we were going to start this summer, uh, with kind of the phase one. And so I'm thinking October, November.
Correct.
We met with them and there was no indication at that point in time.
Okay.
A vacating bench.
Cause we, we approached the city, right, and they said no.
Yeah, we did.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
They said no again, after we.
Whoever's. You don't need to sell your house. Anyway, okay.
Anyway, I don't know. I, I don't know the answer to that, if we have less options, if we have more input, but is that, is that, do we need one, do we need only two? I don't know.
That's up to you guys. It was, I, I, I'm just pointing out the.
I think we probably should have either two or four, because the one and three are the same and the two and the four are, I don't know. I don't know. I wish that I had more.
One and three or not this year?
Input before we got.
Well, then same with no Century Gym.
It's, it's either the gym or not the gym.
That's all that's different in both of those.
So if we're supportive of wanting to get Century's gym, then.
Then it's two and four.
Yeah.
And if you're supportive of just Highland, it's one and three.
Right.
I vote two and four.
Are we voting?
So we just have two?
I don't know, I'm just throwing in my vote.
But, so you just say that you want just two options?
Two options and then just make Century part of the, and, and I guess, so then at the public, we, yeah, you just.
I don't know, I mean, I'm kind of torn. I kind of want to leave these four just for the public hearing.
You're right, it could be.
I'm a little bit torn. I kind of want to leave these four just for the public hearing and then after the public hearing.
And then narrow them down after that.
Then narrow them down.
Yeah, after the public hearing, we, I really need one.
One, right.
Oh, really? Oh.
Is there gonna be?
Yeah, our timeline is real short.
Oh, you can't have, you can't have two options.
That's why I don't think we should have four, cause we want to get it to one.
Yeah.
Right, but I know, but if, if there's just not, I, I just want to know what we have.
We have more options of getting to one if we only have two.
Right, but I think scenario one might be the only option we can hope for, but I don't know.
I don't think so.
He's got a crystal ball.
I don't know, because I don't know if it's offensive to people to say, why are you, you know, you shouldn't be doing it more than what you.
But that's our job. That's what the communications job is to be sure that we make that, that this is about.
Lot of people, lot of school districts.
This is about a community.
Go for bonds that are for multiple schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I know, and that's what fails and not all falls.
Our job to communicate and educate the public about what that option ends up being, but, and Jonathan's very correct in saying, you know, the sooner that we can get out with that messaging and start educating the public about the how and the why and, and the ask, the better.
Cause really, the big question is, is it existing or is it a new build?
Yeah.
And then I think we just bring the Century Gym as part of the whole project.
I'm, I'm okay with, um, scenario two and four. Um, I'm okay with that.
Let's just see where it, where it starts.
I wasn't, but, you know, before, when I asked for that other scenario to be up, I'm like, that's what we get if we fail.
Right, well.
You know, like, we don't have to have that as an option. That's just, if it fails, that's what it is.
I mean, that'll be de facto. That'll, that's, that's the third op, or that's the third option anyway.
I just don't want people, I mean, if you don't support it, that's fine, you say no.
Let's not let them pick it. Right, they'll pick it by de facto.
Right, right. It's either yes, you support it or no, you don't.
Yep.
Yeah.
What do you think, Paul? Are you, add the gym or not?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, I think the gym's important. I think it is.
No, I've had plenty of people talk to me and say, that gym is really small.
Can you say that again?
And we will read, yeah, we'll, this will be.
So it has to be like, we're all leaning towards you as a whole?
Yeah.
I think.
Okay, we need to hear what Courtney's gonna say.
Okay, so we have to be very careful about, we can only educate on this bond, so even when we talk about benefits and, and the benefits of south of town and Century High School, we can't necessarily talk about this project in that language, so we have to stick to the facts. We have to educate about, you know, as extensively as we can, uh, in the limited forum that we'll have about the facts of the project. And, and, and really stay away from that promotional aspect of it and we'll, we'll.
And why, and that's because that's a, a bond?
That is a law.
Yeah.
So we can't say currently the gym at Century is too small?
Hmm, I would be very careful to say, you, you.
We could say what the current capacity is and what we want.
What the enhanced.
We could say what, you know, what, what a typical proud size would, versus capacity. No.
You can't say.
You can't say anything that would be leading, so we have to be very careful about, and we'll have great bond council that will give us advice. We will pass all of our literature, um, through their eyes to say, you know, are we legal, are we within legal obligations? You know, are we meeting those requirements?
So you have to say things in a way that the public comes to those.
Absolutely.
On their own.
So, can I ask the, there are, there are, there are certain, um, people who say that if you give a pro, you also need to give the con.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Just don't say anything.
Well, the con is that it costs, right?
And again, that's for taxpayer dollars and us as school employees and officials. So, you know, other people, other employees can definitely, as long as they're not using taxpayer dollars or email addresses or anything like that, they can say whatever they want.
Well, we're certainly not using taxpayer dollars.
And that's, and that's true too, but you're, in your official capacity as trustees, you, they're still.
Oh, it applies to us too, even though we don't get paid?
As your, as in, in the official capacity of trustees. Again, we'll ask bond council for sure.
Okay, I just want to know what I shouldn't say.
You can say anything privately.
Oh, okay.
You just can't say in an official form.
Not on Facebook.
In the official capacity.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Not on your district email.
Oh, okay.
You can have private conversations, you can call a friend or if a friend asks you, you know, what, what do you think, what, what should I vote? And you can certainly share your opinion. You just can't do it in any official capacity.
Okay.
And again, we'll, we'll ask bond council that exact question and so.
So all this is public? So is that, okay?
Um, yes, because you haven't decided. You haven't decided on the bond yet.
Oh, okay.
You're just discussing, definitely we have to weigh the pros and cons.
Can I just ask the Highland administration what you think about the scenarios? What, just, what's your opinion? Just because you're, you're, I mean, is that okay to ask?
Can you come up to?
Yeah.
Is that, is that okay to ask, like? Is that okay to ask, like?
Yeah, oh, I.
I mean, I think, I'm just very curious. I think it's great.
I know they're not loving putting it off another year, but I don't, I don't like that either. Gotta think beyond.
I know.
Hopefully your thoughts are the same as ours.
Just shout if it's not. Shout out.
Um, I, I am in favor of scenario two and I just, whatever scenarios are here, I think it's two. So, uh, I'm just looking at here to see where else there's Century.
Four is the same as two.
Existing, this is Century and new high school.
Yeah, scenario four is the new high school with Century.
Yeah, I would say scenario two is, I feel like is the best option. Uh, sent, I, I feel like you'll get more voters, uh, you know, in my experience talking to other school administrators that have had to do a bond, the, the more schools they can get involved in the bond, the better it turns out on the vote. Um, I think we have more, Highland is our greatest need, I feel like, right now, but we have a lot of needs in our district and so, um.
So you think that we shouldn't, we should take out scenario one, where it's only just basically doing Highland?
I, I am in favor of scenario two, that's what I'm saying. Whatever you want to do.
What other question I just can, can I just throw out, is, do we need to add anything, anything for Poki like a roof in the wrestling room with an additional growing bathroom?
Almost had fallen under maintenance, wouldn't it?
Well, maybe it should, but it's not currently done.
Right.
I, I'm just wondering, I'm just saying, or, or is it really a well-known fact that they just had a whole bunch of money spent on that?
Well, we've, uh, I, I think we established a need, again, based upon our forward thinking and five to ten year facilities plan.
Oh.
That Century was part of that. Uh, we have made many improvements at Pocatello High School over the past two, three to four years. And so, I mean, it, it, not that we're putting numbers to anything, but certainly the board has benefited Pocatello High School and so I, I.
I, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
And I actually take that back because I actually think it would make it not pass.
Yeah.
Because people are mad.
Unfortunately.
Well, I don't know about that.
I mean, that's just where I live.
Yeah.
We just, we need to focus on the other high schools.
I think it just dilutes.
It does.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It, it kind of narrows it in a little bit because, again, we have done those expansions of Pocatello High School. We've increased the parking areas. All of those were definite needs at the time and I think now we have some other needs in the district.
And I guess it's to communicate to Poki that we won't ignore the needs going forward. We want to make sure that they know that
No, not going forward.
we will continue to meet the needs.
Well, and Poki will benefit from the new gym at Century when they play or, I mean, there's, there's gonna be benefits. I guess the other thing to remember is that this, these scenarios regard, I mean, this is just fine tuning what the communication pieces are gonna look like. I mean, nobody's gonna vote on any of these. It's, we will vote on them, but that's it.
Right, but it's, but eventually somebody will vote on it.
So it just becomes easier to make that real direct communication, get real specific, um, so. Okay. Um, so yeah, I say two and four.
Two and four.
And then make that real clear. We'll narrow it in. People could come make at the public comments.
Yeah, four.
And then, you know, it'll come up in the public comments, why are we doing any of this and we can talk about it.
Yeah.
But at this, at the end of the day, it'll be real clear that we're benefiting or we're. I don't want to use the word enhance or benefit, what are the words we could use? We're, we're, yeah, so we're, we're working to benefit the whole community. And address some of those needs that are, some hefty price tags that just need to be addressed and now's the time to do it.
Right, and all the bullets from three would be moved to four, right? And then, and that would be clarified. That basically new high school, Century Gym, very clear, not other projects or anything, no vague, nothing vague. I think that's, I think that would be a good thing.
And if that's what, no matter what you decide, we'll refine this, we'll come back to you for another review, um, but, but, but as soon as we can give it out to the public before it's public.
I agree. And so the other question, and I guess this will be on the next page, so these numbers that you've identified here, so the forty-two million and the hundred and fifteen, that does include what you're somewhat expecting from insurance already deducted.
Oh, that was my other question is.
Bond equalization already deducted.
That was my other question, is I thought that the low estimate on insurance was forty million. I think I read that somewhere.
No, no.
Twenty-five million?
So again, so just like when you, if you bang up your car, you have to get an estimate, the numbers is, is just an estimate, but we will have to get bids to, to build back just what was burnt and that will help establish the.
But with all the displacement costs and with all the brand new gym and all the.
So all that's gonna be covered, that's not part of the twenty-five. This is only rebuild costs.
Oh, no, I guess, no, it doesn't make sense.
So, so all of the other operating costs, those are covered?
But that's not including this.
That is, that is not part of the twenty-five. This is only to rebuild, rebuild what was lost.
That's not five, it's just to rebuild.
And that twenty-five can either be used at Highland existing or if we pick a new building, that twenty-five million is what you're projecting to be able to.
But we have to establish it through some bidding, you know, and Bateman Hall, Mike and Shay will help us, you know, get those bids, competitive bids.
And, and, and it also doesn't include demo, demolition, correct?
Correct, correct, that would be separate, cause we, we did the demo in, in our emergency services.
Okay, so this doesn't include that either. So this is only, okay.
But this number does leave the, the, the Voag shop, you know, it leaves that north side of D D Wing there. Because again, it's, we're building it kind of as is.
Gotcha.
And so.
And the insurance didn't determine that that needed to be fixed?
Not yet.
That it might, might determine that it still, might still determine it, might.
Only if something happens during demo.
Okay.
Very good.
So again, that's, again, that's another fluid number that might change there, but we're, we'll work to get that nailed down as fast as we can, cause we'll need that number to, you know, set our bond.
And that does also doesn't include replacing, uh, uniforms, furniture?
Correct, yep, that's excluding. Yep, that's, we've already got that started.
Not content.
So, so you're, the first number that you just said is probably the total total, but this is just the.
Okay, and not displacement.
Yeah, correct. It's just the rebuild, to build it back. Again, as we mentioned, plant facilities levy, um, I, I, and again, I wasn't here, but I think we need to all know, uh, again, how we were able to do Pocatello High, and again, please jump in there, again, that it was multi-years of savings to be able to do that, which, but we just barely finished that and we, we're building some, um, some turf fields and some field hall, or team rooms, so the savings is not, you know, it's, as big as it was at the start of the Poki project. Is that?
Correct.
Well, we did the same thing with New Horizon.
Yes.
Same thing with Alameda when we remodeled it. I mean, it was, it was all kind of that same progress as we went.
So if the public asks, hey, you did this without, Poki without asking money, that's how we were able to do that.
Right.
We put some projects kind of on minimally to be able to do the big project. Well, yeah.
In fifteen years.
Yeah, no. No.
Yeah.
So again, that's where we plant facility levies, you know, again, as we get that every year, um, year three of ten, I believe, um, you know, we can, you know, carve out a little bit there. General fund, again, we'll, we're looking to see, we'll have those numbers for you in October, but I, we anticipate at least three million should be there. So the one thing, uh, on the bond levy equalization, again, we will not get this money, the bond levy equalization helps with principal and interest of the bond payment. Doesn't help with construction costs, so, you know, that just, and that's, so that really impacts our, the, the, the tax impact. And, and again, that will fluctuate and.
Isn't construction cost part of the intra, of part of the principal?
No, no, so that's, um, the construction costs would basically be, be the amount of the bond. You know, so if we, if we were to bond, let's use this example for, I'm going to increase it a little bit, forty-five million. You know, we, we will work with our team to, to build our facilities that we need for forty-five million. We sell the bond and then they're going to give us a bond schedule for however long we want. Ten-year, twenty-year, fifteen-year, and, and, you know, every year, we're going to have to make a, let's just say, three million dollar bond payment. That's what we're going to ask our taxpayers to pay. But, okay, we know that, you know, six hundred thousand of that, you know, if it's twenty percent, you know, might come from the state, so, so we will only ask for two hundred and forty. Or, or two point four million dollars. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I just hope that it makes sense to the public, that, that when they vote on this, that they know that they will get that savings.
Correct, and it, it will actually has to, it will be in the, the ballot language.
Okay, but I mean, the public perception right now is what we're building though, so as long as it's included in the public.
Okay.
Communication right now.
Yep.
Cause nobody listens. I mean, people just don't listen. They, they hear one thing and then they stick with it forever and they don't hear anything more. So as long as right at the beginning, it's clear.
Okay.
And then I guess, I guess this, I know I said this already, but if we could go with scenario two and four, I just want to be very clear that on the next page, I think this is stapled backwards. I think, cause, um, on the next page, it talks about the enrollment. It hasn't gone up. And so as long as we're very, very clear on scenario four, it's not building, about building more space. It's about improving the space for everyone going into the future. For, you know, to make the, all the way down to elementary.
It is a little bit though, right? What's your current capacity at Highland? Fifteen. So, I mean, there's a slight, I mean, there has, I, I, I mean, it would be, I don't think we'd want to say that it's, ooh. I don't think we'd want to say that it's, we're just going from apples to apples. I mean, there is.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that the purpose of this.
Right.
Isn't to build a new high school just, just because we need that. It would, it would have a domino effect, and we would be shutting schools down. We don't need just that additional. We would be shutting, you know, getting rid of some old structures that aren't, um, so good anymore.
Okay, sounds good.
Again, we have some other properties that we might be able to sell or transfer, and, um, you know, as we, we get those a little bit closer, we do that. And obviously we have private and public partnerships, donations. We can accept all of that.
And that would be part of scenario two or four, that we will accept all private and public donations toward any of this.
One, two, three, or four, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I know that's been something that, accepting private donations has been something that's been said to me quite a bit. Lots of different people.
Yeah.
At different schools too, not just in my area, in different Poki and Highland.
Yep, and, and again, we, we just, in the past few years, just changed our procedures on that, and so we definitely are.
We've been working to communicate that. There's still some misconceptions about that.
I guess I need to know that, what it is.
And, and again, lastly, again, even more fluid, trying to figure out what that is, is the potential tax relief. I mean, we know that we're going to receive this money, um, from House Bill two ninety-two. We estimate maybe four, four point five million. That, so our levy will be that much less this year? This year?
Oh, that's important to.
Correct. It's, it's just, and so it, but then if, if, if the one passes in November, that will not be affected our taxpayers until the following year.
Right, but whenever you vote for something, it is for the next year, right? It affects our taxes the next year.
Sure, sure. Yeah, it, it just won't affect it the month after we vote on it, of course.
Right, but it won't either direction, up or down.
Um, it's just with this one, we state what we know. It maybe, we have projections that it's at least three years total, so this year and the following two. Um, we just don't know, and so it's hard to go out and say that without knowing for sure.
Okay, I, I think that's all we have for you today.
Thank you so much for all this work.
I'm sorry, just making that clear. Okay.
I guess if people want to bring up the other ones, they can.
Absolutely.
In their, in our meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just appreciated all the input I've gotten. I, I know you start out with an idea and then it changes when you learn more, and I appreciate that. I, the, the public, the people that have reached out to me and I've reached out to them, I just appreciate that a lot. It helps a lot.
Oh, just one final comment, maybe.
So we wanted, wanted to remind you about the public forum next Tuesday, um, August eighth, from six to eight PM. We're going to host that at Century High School. We will livestream that public forum. Um, we will do an introduction with an education piece and go over some of this information, so it's very clear from the outset what the scenarios are. Um, Jonathan did such a good job tonight. I envision he will be, uh, leading that charge. Not at all. Um, we have started to promote that today, so we did a flyer. Um, it's on, uh, it's a pop-up on our website. It's on social media. I did a digital ad push through the Idaho State Journal, um, and we will push out an Infinite Campus message once this piece is ready.
But not this, so you're talking about the public forum. Is that right?
This is part.
This will be part of the public forum, so once we get this revised and refined, hopefully tomorrow, um, it's, it's going to be a short turnaround. So I will let you know once that's in your inbox for you to review, and then if you have any additional changes, um, I would love to give that, get that out by Thursday, um, or Friday at the latest.
What do you envision our role then? Are, are we just?
We're just listening?
In the audience, listening? It's, it's not going to be.
You'll be up on the stage. It'll be similar to, to the forums that we hosted for COVID.
And you take the shot.
That's right.
So. Yeah.
But that, and I guess that's the other question is, are we responding to people or we just, so you'll be posing questions or people will come in and speak?
No, people will just come and.
They'll just come and talk.
And talk.
And we, then they don't, they don't ask us questions and we don't respond.
We can't respond.
That's why it will be important for us to give that, you know, ten-minute presentation overview of what we're talking about. So we contextualize what we're there for. We, um, summarize the options and the scenarios that, that you're reviewing, that they've been discussing and narrowed down. I think it's really important for the public to understand that you have narrowed down, so I appreciate that. Um, and then we'll open it up for them to present to you, and I believe three minutes? Yeah, and, and.
Do you have three minutes or two?
Three.
Three.
Do you have three?
Two is nothing.
Goes past. Okay.
Um, one, one other question though, is when, when they, when they have questions, will we have an opportunity at the end to be able to answer any questions that have come up?
I think we'll, uh, I think our team should be able to handle those.
Okay, so their questions will be answered?
I think we could do that. You bet.
Okay.
We'll try our best.
Maybe just kind of like right now, as questions come up.
Because, you know, you don't want to.
It could go forever.
Yeah, potentially.
Right, but if there's ma- especially major misconceptions.
Or, you know, we could also do an FAQ after we've finished.
Yeah, and maybe five. I mean, I'm not saying twenty-five questions. I'm saying just a few bullets.
And we may not have the, you know, the answers on the spot. It may be something that we'll have to research.
Right, but if, if there's a question that comes up that's pretty important, if we could say this was asked, but we will find out, or this was asked, who's the answer or something.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would, that would be great.
Can we talk amongst ourselves in that setting? Or is it just?
We're just listening, okay.
We won't make a decision that night, will we?
No. No, we won't schedule.
Okay, like when we did the massing out there.
We'll let you come back and process, synthesize everything that you've heard and.
Right.
Yeah.
So we won't be saying anything for the night?
So on our timeline, we're looking.
I don't know, Heather. I think you have a harder time than me. You say way more than I do.
I know, me, I'm.
You can take copious notes.
Yeah, we can't take notes.
So I think we had it scheduled, uh, for action the first week of September. Anybody remember?
Oh, we don't have much time after that, do we?
No.
I mean, we have to be on, we have to have that form filled out by when?
September eighteenth.
September eighteenth. But I definitely want it before, I mean, yeah.
Have you been working yet with the bond, I mean, to at least start on the, the language for the ballot? I mean, I know.
Sure, a- and they actually have. They've actually started. We've got a little form. They were even looking, oh, are you ready for the fifteenth of August? And I said, no, not quite. Not quite there yet.
We don't have to be ready until the fifteenth.
But yeah, maybe we squeeze, what was the twenty-second of August?
I don't, I don't have the timeline in front of me. I don't remember.
Maybe we could look at that.
Oh, sure. I mean, if you want to bring it forward, we can. That was just tentative, those are tentative dates.
Nothing to calculate.
And we also had a, a survey put in there. I, I think you will be able to glean the information. Do you want out of the public forum? Courtney will also open a link, uh, on the website for those that want to submit and, uh, write and comment. And so you'll be able to review all of those as well.
And so that will be during the livestream that they can, can.
We will just publish a, an email address, and that will just come directly to me, and then that will go into your next board packet or whenever we need access to that.
But during the livestream, would they be able to comment?
No.
Oh, we won't pick those up. No, you'll just read those later.
No, but we'll communicate how people can, can share their feedback and, and get it in front of you.
If there is enough time, I know it's six to eight, if we get finished early and there are people that still want to say something that didn't sign up early, can we just let them? I know our policy is they have to sign up before the beginning of the meeting.
That's actually one of my questions, because I haven't, I wasn't here during the enrollment, uh, the boundary discussion, so I am actually unclear if people have to fill out the form or if they just come and speak.
We still have them fill out the form.
Right.
Right, but that night.
Because then we estimate the amount of time.
Right.
Right.
Can they fill one out that night?
Yeah, my question is if they have three minutes, we're finished with the people that have spoken, we still have a little bit of time, and there are still people that want to, can they have three minutes?
Um, that's up to you, but typically we've tried to hold to the standard.
Well, if they know, if they know that they have to fill out their paper, then they need to be.
Well, I know that after.
If they really want to speak, then they'll be there on time to fill it out.
Right, I understand that, but when you sit in a meeting and you have a lot of information given to you, a lot of times you end up with questions. So, anyway.
But then they can go online and put in that.
Or maybe can we have like a little thing, questions as they leave, that they can ask, hey, if you had any other questions?
Sure.
Just write them, drop it. Just write it down, drop it.
Yeah.
I, I really do want to know what people think. I really do want to know. I don't want to shut anyone out.
And we'll communicate, we'll, we'll share when, when we post, you know, once, once we have the sheet ready to go, we'll share how they can sign up. Um, I'll provide that link that they can do it beforehand. We usually go in order received, so it, 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 um, benefits people to, to turn it in early. So we will absolutely try to do that, and, and then communicate the follow-up opportunities that they have to communicate.
I don't want them to just think all they have, all the ability they have is to vent to their friends or, or post on Facebook. I want them to have very open, you know, a very open avenue so that they, everything comes to us, so we know.
Absolutely. When we did the Pocatello High School renovation, we provided opportunity. That went really well, the way we promoted it and, and the avenues that we gave to people to provide their feedback. Same thing with COVID. We got, um, a, a great deal of response from people for COVID because of those, uh, communication channels that we opened. And we will use the same techniques and, and, and add comment cards and leave boxes at the forum and, and give them every opportunity.
Okay, that'll be good. Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty, um, we don't have public comment on this one, do we?
Nobody signed up.
Okay, well then that concludes this meeting, right? And I declare us adjourned.